Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the February 19th Commissioners Meeting. Good to have all three of us back at the same table so I don't have to remember to do a low call vote.
God forbid.
We are going to start this morning with Steve Higginbotham, the Director of, are you the Director of Facilities and Grounds? I thought you were the Director of...
Facilities and Development.
Development, yeah.
But hey, it all pays the same.
You're the Director.
It all pays the same.
Yeah, there you go.
You're directing something. You make more than us.
I've pointed that out to him a number of times recently.
How's it feel to have your bosses make less than you? All three of us add together don't make as much as you do.
It's close. It's close. Anyway.
I have no comment.
You're just grateful.
Wise man.
You're just grateful to have a job, right? There you go. And we are grateful to have you because you are the best, best Director.
He's not grateful to have us, I feel.
Best Director that's currently sitting in that chair in the chambers.
At this particular time.
At this particular time. Go ahead, Steve. Sorry about that.
All right, you have your project. The NX generator, I have reached out to the contractor to express my displeasure of the delay. This is a contract that has an expiration date, completion date of 264 days, and we're more than double that now. He did send me a correspondence that he has from the generator manufacturer to indicate that they are going to hold up. You know, we've crossed this bridge before on some of the projects that this contractor has been involved with, remember the jail project and the courthouse HBAC project.
Is there, there's no callbacks, no penalties? Can we start putting those in our contracts?
Well, and the reason why we don't, and according to Ron, generally if you put those in there, the contractor will want something, okay, if I finish it earlier, then I get paid extra.
You know what? We're still money ahead.
I know.
I mean, I'm not opposed to that. Let's, let's look at the real world here and how business works. You reward somebody for finishing early, but there's a penalty if you don't meet deadlines. We all, I mean, in the business world, that's, we all have that.
And tragically though, when you look back through all of our projects that we've done, it's generally this one particular contractor. The rest of them have been pretty close to on time or...
So we're, we're at their mercy. I mean, look at the, look at this room, though. We had that guy going on forever and ever, and we end up have to get another contractor because, so if there's no penalties, we're at the mercy of them.
I think I'm ready to escalate this up a little bit for a little more pressure.
Okay, well, let's...
You want me to make a call to him? I will.
Be my guest. Apparently, I don't have the clout that seems to take to get him...
Well, as Commissioners, we approved the contract, so maybe he'll think a little harder about that.
I'll forward you my last email.
Yeah, please do. I'll call him.
See what his response was. All right. What's next? The X-ray and screen equipment was delivered and it is installed. So that project is completed. Remember that we kept the old, we were going to keep the old piece of equipment to be a part of the front plaza construction project. Remember, we were going to move that down to the end of the courthouse so we wouldn't have to move the new piece of equipment. Well, obviously that has changed and we're going to not need this piece of equipment. I'm not aware of anything else in the building complex that we have where this could be used. Jeff, I think you've indicated that the sheriff has suggested that they might give this to Connersville PD.
Sell it, I think.
Well, Connersville Courthouse.
Connersville Courthouse.
Right.
Fayette County.
So remember that this piece of equipment we obtained in about 2005, and the reason why we look at this piece of equipment new is because we did not make this contract on this due to the age. It does have an issue with the conveyor belt. It's starting to rip. This piece of equipment, albeit it has served us well and it probably was expensive to initially start with, it really has no value to us other than storing it someplace.
And I don't want to do that.
I say we just give it to them. If it has, if we deem it has no value, I mean, and if they're willing to take it, if they have nothing, they come and get it, and we warrant nothing.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we give it to Fayette County and with those stipulations.
I'll second that.
Ron, do we need to make any other findings other than this?
What's the equipment?
It's the, it's the old X-ray equipment for the courthouse. We got the new one installed. It, it essentially, it has no value.
It's unneeded for our purposes.
Correct.
Plus, we couldn't get a, make this contract on it any longer.
Because it's obsolete.
Right.
So I'll make my motion that we deem it has no value also and...
Yeah.
And give it to Fayette County if they...
They so choose, they'll come pick it up and take it.
Right. Okay, so that's your amended motion.
And I'll second.
Second.
Yes.
Well, we need a similar resolution.
All right. Anything else before we take a vote? Hearing nothing, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries, and we'll contact Fayette County this afternoon.
You want to go to Ron now?
If that's... Why don't you go ahead?
While I'm talking, what I didn't send you, I sent you the wrong thing.
I know you did. But I assume it's the usual.
It's the usual SRI contract. It's right there in front of you. Want to take a quick look at it? Because I'll talk about that in a minute. Next thing on the list is the courthouse front entrance and I'll combine the elevator project with that. We're going to meet with LWC, our contractor tomorrow, our architect contractor to discuss what the next steps of the plan is. And then we're also going to talk about the change cost of the entrance project, remember we moved it out to the front? And Mr. Alley has come up with some figures. It looks like it's going to be close to a wash simply because we don't have to buy the ramp and the door opener for the south. And we'll be charged for fencing because remember that was a concern to make sure that our employees and the customers in the courthouse had some good separation from the actual work going on. So that'll be part of the conversation tomorrow as well as starting a conversation on landscaping that we might want with this overall project. Remember, there was, what, $50,000, I think, part of that original cost.
It's earmarked for landscaping, correct?
For landscaping.
Steve, just back to the, the door, the entryway, and, and we believe now that the front entrance would only be closed for over a long weekend. But can we make arrangements so that if somebody needs to go into work over that long weekend, that they can get in through the south door?
Yeah, or the north door. Probably south. Remember, the north door has a little issue with it closing.
Exactly. So, so we'll, we'll need to sort out who might need keys and that kind of thing, but just for that long weekend. Okay, good. Thank you.
And then, what, the courthouse elevator project? You know, we had, we had a notice last week where the elevator was malfunctioning for a period of time. It was supposed to be caught on the third floor.
Third floor, yeah.
The elevator repair folks did have the part on hand, got it running within hours. It was a sensor that allowed the unit not to stop where it was supposed to stop. So if you look back over the last year, when we started talking about this, you know, we've had a, I don't understand, probably what, every two or three months?
Yeah, absolutely. If not more often than that.
So as we look at this project and just based upon our experience, you know, maybe we should just run the string out on a chairlift as well.
I think find out what's available potentially.
What's our maintenance, pardon me, what's the maintenance fee on the elevator we have now?
The contract, you mean?
Yeah, is it TK?
This elevator and the jail elevator, it's all on one contract. I can't, not sure I can give you a breakdown specifically for that one. But we have a contract on all three elevators, so it would seem to me that, you know, even given the time to put the new one in, we're still looking at months down the road.
Yeah, absolutely.
And if a chairlift is something that we could put in relatively...
Is that something we could rent?
You know, I don't know.
Possibly. Because we wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't need it after...
Yeah, once we get two elevators, I mean, I'd hate to spend the money to buy it.
I think we need to have this conversation.
Have the conversation and, and sort it out. I mean, Aaron and I were, were in the courthouse during that incident, and, and there were a couple of folks, you know, coming down the stairs that maybe shouldn't have been. So we need an alternative in case this happens multiple times and...
Yeah, I don't, this, based upon our previous experience of the last year, this is going to be the last time it happens.
No, and...
It's probably going to get more frequent. I mean, it's, it's getting to its...
Or more, depending on who the contractor is and, you know...
Well, we don't even have anybody right now that...
Lead time is for, for getting a new elevator.
We have to address the flu first.
Absolutely.
Flu and then the monument on the wall.
It's not going to happen quickly.
Is that Dover or is that TK? You know, the vendor? Who's the vendor for that? The elevator?
Our elevator, TK.
TK.
Yeah. And they've been very responsive to us. They...
They're good.
But even a short period of time is the longest period of time if you're stuck in an elevator.
Sure.
Or stuck at the top of the steps without an elevator. So I think we should include that as part of the conversation.
Any, any other discussion you all have?
I'm fine. I just think we need to look at both avenues, rent, yep, or purchase, I mean...
Absolutely, absolutely.
Because you got three floors, you, you gotta take it to, buy three separate or rent three separate ones. It's not...
Three, three separate flights.
Yeah.
So that'll be part of the conversation tomorrow as well. It's really only two.
I mean, I can call that number I see on the TV commercial.
And then the ITK project continues. They have finished installing it in this building. They've been pulling the old wires out as they finished with the top floor last night in probation. So they'll be wrapping up this building in a couple, a couple of days, I'm sure, and then to the health department. So they're pretty well on schedule for that.
Good.
Proxy card lock system, they have a pre-construction meeting scheduled for February 25th. It'll be here 10 o'clock to walk their workers' new building to get eyes on as they start laying out the timeframe for that schedule. Then that obviously leads us to the place to where commissioners will be presenting the policy, the policy to implement this...
Right.
Proxy card system and the responsibility of the employees and who gets what card.
And so we've talked about getting, using the cards as IDs, name badges, whatever you want to call them.
Which is, which has come up in our security meetings.
Exactly.
To identify employees if in fact they need to evacuate and...
Exactly. So is, is Kim working on a, a policy on wearing a, a name badge?
Yeah, we actually looked at this sometime ago.
Years ago.
So we got...
Seventeen years ago.
We got our notes on this.
Thank goodness for notes.
And if you remember, part of the conversation last security meeting was some of that responsibility to photograph it.
To HR, correct.
And then on the lower right-hand corner is your fund balances for the paragraph fees, right? So along with that, just on the council balance, I'm going to ask Councilman Smith how he wants to, where he wants to discuss the particular funding for vehicles for the Sheriff's Department. I don't think that was ever nailed down during the budget process, although I think they planned for some vehicle purchases. You've seen my emails back and forth about whether or not there's a state QPA...
Right.
On Chevy Tahos, according to the Indiana State Police, there will be a QPA for those. And so sometime coming up, plenty of time, we're putting this out for this, you know, ourselves or for the QPA. But in the meantime, I do think that commissioners and council need to start talking about numbers and where that's going to be funded from. So we got that in place.
So the request was for five, I believe, five Tahos?
Right. And they tentatively identified five vehicles which would be removed from the fleet. I think those five that Major Moore has identified and would go ahead and have Mike vet those just so that when the time comes, we can have that part of the discussion, make sure that that's the cars that we do want to get rid of.
And so, you know, one of the issues is going to be, are we buying cars that are already in someone's inventory, or are we ordering cars, which could mean it's six months or a year before we get them?
Well, I think that we need to look at, even though the state may have this, but their ordering, how many was the state police ordering? I mean, it...
Five hundred?
Yeah. So we're going to be low on the totem pole when it comes to getting the vehicles.
I don't disagree with that, and I think that, that's why I'm putting it out there for conversation now, because I think there may be a time that we say it might be better for us to go.
Bid.
Put it up ourselves.
Because, I mean, we're going to order 25s and we get them in 26s.
And so we, we've had this conversation before, but we've gone kind of back and forth on whether, if you're writing specs for, for going out to bid, whether you can gear those specifications to a particular make and model of vehicle. Where, where are we at on that?
I haven't had, we haven't had it recently. I think, it depends on what our needs are that we're buying for, if we're talking about the Sheriff's Department. I think we're looking at fleet compatibility issues, and since they have their own in-house garage, don't they? I think parts, I mean, I think those are justifiable reasons. Now, they need to be reasons, not...
You know, if you're replacing a Tahoe with a Tahoe, the light bar, the radio, all this stuff.
The box.
So we could say we're going out to bid for five Tahos with these options.
And I think as long as you're working off the QPA or taking your own bids, you, you don't have to take the lowest one if there's a material difference in delivery time, because you're right, we could spec 26s and be, at the end of 26 model of the year, start 27 before we got them.
And in this, in this case, with law enforcement vehicles, it's different than the pool car that we're buying, you know? Although we're looking for some compatibility, it seems to be more important now with law enforcement vehicles because of the cost to equip them.
Right.
Remember, every time we changed making a dog catcher truck, remember we had to buy a new box?
You got to buy a new box.
It would fit the bed, and that box was...
Same with the jail vans and those kind of things.
Jail vans, same thing. So it would seem to me that part of that bid is compatibility with our current fleet.
Absolutely.
And obviously, the merit officer's current fleet is, is getting to be predominantly for the Tahos. So anyway, just, I think that's where we're going to go the next month.
Okay.
To have that conversation.
But we are not, we're not having a fleet meeting today, right?
We probably will in March, because I hope this becomes clear at that point.
Are there, other than the, the cars for the Sheriff's Department, are there any other vehicles that...
Remember, the health department's already got theirs.
Already got one.
I think we had two, two trucks earmarked, purchased this year, I think, new pickup trucks.
Okay. All right.
Okay, that's it on projects. You have a couple handouts to the deed sale. And first, first document, several pages, since the top page is the calendar for the 2024, 2025, actually should be 2025, deed sale. I hope that's the right one. It says 24.
It says Thursday, April...
Last month, last week it said 24, too.
So you can see the deed sale set for Thursday, April 17th, and that gives you the calendar of the milestones that, that will come up over the next several weeks leading up to this sale. Couple of things, the next two pages are the list that was provided to us by the Treasury Department that these are, these are the unsold properties from the tax sale. And then Jeff and Aaron and I went through these and using the criteria that we've used in the past where we wanted to put these, because remember these go in the commissioner's name and if they don't sell, it's still in our name, and we've got some responsibility to keep, keep them mowed and safe, et cetera, et cetera. So I just simply put on that right-hand column there whether or not it will be in the sale or not. And so this is what we submitted to Selena and Smith to the court, or that court ordered to put these in.
For the sale. So the ones that say no, we're not going to put in the deed sale, but we do hold certificates of purchase. We don't know if that's...
That's correct. And so along that line, that last package, because what we, what we found in the last couple of years, especially with the... Whether or not there will come a time beyond the deed sale that we would want to do something with one of these properties, we would want to put it in our name. Or because of the more aggressive stance that the city has taken on code enforcement, we're seeing more and more vacant lots, this, this particular deed sale list is predominantly vacant lot.
Correct.
And there'll be some question whether or not they'll have a marketability with or without the house on it. So I'm suggesting that this tax deed sale committee be assembled, and I just threw out some suggestive representatives. And the reason for this is that each year we have requests, specific, more, more from the city than, than not, that they have other entities that would have some interest in some of these properties, for example, Habitat for Humanity, Housing Authority. There's a couple this year, what was it, Advantix? I'm not sure what that group is. I think it's an infill housing group.
Yes, it is.
So I'm starting to see a different process than we've had in the past. Not necessarily all of them will be disposed of at a deed sale. There may be another avenue that we see better.
Transfer to the city and then they dispose of them, give them to these non-for-profits.
There's an in-plan for how it's going to be used.
But we have to have a written agreement for, if we're giving them to the city, that they're going to take them regardless.
And there also is the opportunity to work with the adjacent property owners...
Right.
Rather than going through a deed sale process and transferring those to one or both of the adjacent property owners. And I think we need to look at this group to do that kind of legwork upfront before we commit to owning a piece of property that, that we're going to have to maintain because maybe nobody, nobody will ever want it.
Right. And we don't want it.
Exactly, exactly. And just like with the, the current blight elimination grant program that we're, we're working through, the, the help plan, the, one of the requirements is if we're going to help a town or the city demolish a building that, that needs to be removed, that if it's not sold in the, in the deed sale, that they will take title. They agree to take title.
We don't get a bad...
We don't have to, you know, have it. So there are several of those properties. The very first one on the top of the page is one that is in that blight program in Dublin. So...
Is the land bank, has that been created or is that just something we're still...
I stuck that on there just because I want commissioners to know that's going to be, could be a potential...
And is the concept, or you have a unified land bank with the city of Richmond in the county or...
Correct, correct. And in fact, the, the EDC is pursuing a contract with a, a group that will, is currently a land bank in Indianapolis, and they will instruct us on how to, how to set one up, how to operate it, giving us their insight into how this can work most effectively. So it's, it's very likely to happen. The money has already actually been appropriated for that, and so in the next few months, I expect that will get underway.
So I'm going to read, if you, if commissioners think that this is the right direction, you go, I'm going to reach out to these different groups to see if they have interest and why they should have interest to sit on this committee, because it could benefit the city as well.
Oh, absolutely.
This is, this is my thought of where this should go.
Think the mayor's likely to do, designate like Board of Public Works Chair?
I hope. Now, we've had, Jeff and I have had several conversations with the mayor, not anything specific, but the land bank concept, transferring of some of these properties. Obviously, we've had several conversations with the two homes out by the park.
On Main Street, yeah.
Can't seem to get that one off the top of its head, but...
It's been hovering around for a while.
Exactly.
It might be the 17-year mark.
You know, so...
As long as we don't own them for the 17 years.
That's right. We're not going to own it.
A lot of these that, that where we think there might be interest on the part of the city to acquire them, you know, we're having those conversations, but from my perspective, we don't want to take title unless we have a written agreement with the city that, that they will accept it from us.
And we found that last year, because we thought they were going to take those two on the corner there and...
You know, the, the philosophy, if you will, the commissioner several years ago when the deed sale came up, the purpose, the intent was get it back on the tax rolls.
Right.
And that was why most of these ended up in the auction. But then as things changed and the city has gotten more aggressive with their tearing down halls, we ended up, I mean, we've had several where people thought they were buying a house and it got torn down.
And it got torn down in between the sale and the...
So now we're, our philosophy is changing just a bit. We want a better use for the end of this property.
In which we should.
Absolutely, absolutely. What's the best, what's the best use here? And I would say that past, the past thought of just getting it back on the tax rules at whatever, at whatever cost we can get, $100 or $500, you know, as the minimum bids, we get a good portion of those back in over three to five years. Because nothing has been done to them, they, they decide that, you know, it's not worth their time and energy to fix it up or what have you, whatever the reason, we get a significant percentage of those back, and this way I think we can avoid that. We can find them.
And even getting them back is better than what we had at one time, because we didn't have a system in place that would make sure that they recorded their deed when they bid it in at the deed sale. And so we had a couple of those, I remember that, you know, we've come to find out that, yeah, they family bought, bid it in, but one of them died and...
Huh. Didn't know about those, so...
So if you concur that this is a path we should try, and this will evolve, I'm sure, but first thing I'll do is reach out to you guys and see if they have this. So if you concur that this is a path we should try and this will evolve, I'm sure, but first thing I'll do is reach out to you, see if they have this.
And that segues into the Commissioner deed sale addendum agreement, you have a copy of that, Ron, this is what I didn't send you.
I know, but I, 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 I looked at last year's, the one thing I didn't pay attention to was the fees and I don't know how they changed, that's. Percent. Fee, SRI's fees.
Yeah, it's the same, I believe.
Fifteen percent?
Yeah.
Yeah, you never get that high.
So Jeff, if. I want you to give the doc, just read the contract addendum agreement.
All right.
And there's, if you assign, I assume you need a copy for the auditor.
Just do all the three that we have.
Just do all three.
And we're on your good with this, you don't see, I mean, it's all the same one we've done the last couple of years.
I think two years ago, remember we had the unusual circumstance with the.
Right.
Right.
Basically, the surreptitious bidding process. And they were there, it wasn't in the agreement, they hung with us and I don't know what the marginal cost was too, there was some.
They did, they did us pretty right on that one.
I agree, I agree. So do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve this addendum for SRI to do our deed sale.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign, motion carries. So all three of us need to sign all three of these copies. Steve, what else have you got?
Okay, next you have, I forward you a copy of an application for a non-for-profit event rental, they're, they're asking for a discount in the rental fee at the fairgrounds. Remember, we formed together a year or so ago so that people are going to come to you with some formality. This particular one is from Eastern Indiana Works for Veterans Job Fair. And it's helping Expo Hall on September twenty fifth, happy new year to Jeff. And Jeff, they'll be on hand, helping veterans with the appointed opportunities and usual. I might mention that our veterans officers do take part in this event, so they are on hand as well. And I would recommend, because they don't charge a admission, there's no, there's no income that they generate from this assistance event stood on by Eastern Indiana Works for Veterans. I would recommend that waive the rental fee for the Expo Hall for that day.
Two for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the fees for an event at the fairgrounds for Veterans Job Fair. Further discussion, hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign, motion carries.
Then I had an inquiry or a request from the town, they're planning on, or thinking about applying for a community crossings grant. For their community, they need help estimating that twenty-five percent match that they need. It would seem to me that Mike and Brandon could probably help with that, but much of their input or help me copy out that.
I think that falls within the scope of what our guys should be doing. So I would suggest we would approach Mike and Brandon and ask them to help out Economy on estimating the, the cost for their community crossings project. Any thoughts?
No problem with that.
I'll give them a call this afternoon.
You'll, you'll call Mike, right?
Yep.
And the last thing I have, remember, actually two weeks ago, I forwarded an email to you about the barriers that are used to separate the alley from our parking lot with the public health department. These were put in a number of years ago, they're actually brick columns that building grounds had constructed. They are, they got a chain between the two and we'd had problems with, people cut through that lot from the alley to avoid the park, either to avoid the stoplight to get down South Fifth. Or there's a couple of rental units on to the, to the west there where they get cut from South Fifth and go right into their parking lot. We had some damage to some of our cars by some of these cars passing through and hitting our cars. We'd had a couple of signs that were damaged by cars using this parking lot or actually using it and passing through it. So this last large snow, either they got pushed over by the snowplow or Dan thinks that he's seen somebody actually move them so that they can get through. And they're pretty heavy and once you move them, try moving back, a couple of them's broken, I think I sent you the pictures on these. What's your thoughts, where do you want to go with this? We, we did a, we had this same thing, oh, it's been four or five years ago. And I went to the extreme and I had Mike Sharp bring in some of these jersey barriers that you see along construction sites and it lined that whole area. That upset some of the neighbors, they, they thought that didn't look good. So the commissioners at that time told us, told me to take them back out and not use them because they didn't look good. But they served a purpose, they kept people from crossing through. I've looked at bollards to go down through there, that's about a hundred and sixty-five feet. If you put them every four or five feet, you know, close enough where you can't get a car through it, each bollard's about three or four hundred bucks. It's not a cheap fix. Dan, I think in his email, I don't think he seems to have any, he indicates, I don't care whether the barricades is there or not, but he thinks. Decide whether to repair them or remove them, so apparently Dan, that's director, now previous directors wanted something there, Dan doesn't seem to have a concern one way or the other, at least on his email. Looking for guidance on what you want me to do here.
No issues with parking the big, the, the Health Department mobile unit?
No.
I mean, yeah, we can use that part of the barrier.
And they do. There are some.
Yeah, they park it on the end there at the.
Yeah, they, they use that and plus there's some, there's some highway barricades on the other side of that, that's there when the mobile unit is gone. What's your thoughts?
Could we do like metal poles and a chain?
I think we could. Let's, let's take some time to think this through and look at options.
Stands made of ceramic or the brick? Brick, okay.
Yeah.
Red bricks.
Look at them today too.
I want to see.
They look pretty decent.
I thought they looked new. And weren't they connected with like a plastic?
At first, yeah, then we, when we started having this problem, we replaced the plastic.
I think part of the problem is they're, they're, they're not permanently attached to the, to the parking lot, to the ground.
Well, that's what I was thinking, actually just get the poles.
And, and drive them into.
Drive them into the.
Three feet and concrete them in.
We talked to the people, I'm assuming the people that would be complaining are those on the west side of the alley. I mean, are those owner occupied, are they rented, do we know?
No, they're all, they're all rentals, I think.
Rentals and it's the rentor complained about our jersey barriers.
That's because they wouldn't move if they backed into them. I, let's, there's no immediate hurry, this been, we've had this situation for a while. So let's, let's think through some, some possible solutions and may go out and take a look at, at what Mike would have available. You know, it might just be an issue of, of painting whatever we put up instead of having weathered concrete or something. Hey. I would expect that suggestion from some people, but not, not necessarily you.
Wow.
And that's all I have.
That's all you have? Okay, let's go on to Ron.
Do you want to, on the tower lease, you want to wait for Matt, Matt, I think was on the agenda and I didn't see that.
Yeah, he's not on the agenda until ten thirty. You want to see if Matt can come up earlier?
Remember, he couldn't come up because he had a meeting.
Another meeting, okay. Yeah, let's hold off on that.
And I did review Senate Bill three oh four, I don't know where you stand, it wouldn't come up on the, one of their websites yesterday, it said it couldn't, page couldn't be found, but then I bypassed and found it. Passed out of committee, would've been so simple just to leave that one reference to, to. The rescission of the statute relating to Winn County Enablement. Or even if their goal is they want to get these dangling entitlement bills off the books, either use them or lose them type of mentality, which I think maybe I can read some of that into this. If they just give us the same expiration date the city has into twenty seven.
Exactly.
At least we'd, we'd still have, and you know, politically, this has always been a bit of an issue, problem. Because, you know, if we've had the authority, the ability to adopt a food and beverage tax for the entire county, but upon our doing it, then any of the incorporateds. Would have the ability to basically adopt their own and in fact carve their jurisdiction out of what we would have already created, so the political.
The, the, the significant issue other than the fact, which is the most significant, is it's a new tax.
Right.
And so does anyone want to impose a new tax and is there a reason to do it? But now that, now that the, the, the next issue was if the county did it, the city could, could have done it the next day.
Exactly.
And, and kept essentially eighty percent of the proceeds of the tax because most of the restaurants are within the city limits. And so now they're, they're taking that off the table by having, pursuing their own legislation, which I have no problem with, that's something the city should decide. But as part of that same legislation, now when, when one of the significant reasons to not do it is off the table because the city has its own legislation. They're proposing to take away any of the other towns and the counties' option to.
I don't know if there's an implied assumption that we didn't intend to do it, but I think they just didn't look at the political situation they created. I mean, literally you'd take the political heat and baggage for creating the tax and you wouldn't get, our patrons would not get the benefit from it.
Exactly, so I, again, I have no earthly idea whether any, whether the county or any of the towns would ever even contemplate adopting the food and beverage tax. But I don't think particularly in this uncertain time with what's the discussions that are going on in the legislature about changes to the tax structure. This is one of the very few options that.
It doesn't make sense to eliminate. Take it off the table, or we don't want it taken off our table.
Exactly.
And then we don't have an option if they cut our revenue, so.
Exactly, and so again.
Has anybody had a conversation with our representative?
I have, in fact, I.
Is that something they're willing to put back on there?
Spent an hour on the phone with Senator Rods on Monday and he understands the situation and, and they're going to have discussions. Remember, this is, this is still just the first half of the legislative session, so there's plenty of time to amend.
And it's a simple, I mean, you, you just strike out that one.
Exactly.
Yeah, it's not.
And I wouldn't even, as, as you alluded to, if they want to put in the same language that they have included for the city, that the city would have from the adoption of this bill to twenty twenty seven.
To put a sunset in this.
To decide whether to adopt it.
That's fine.
I'm uncomfortable with that, but.
I think the big issue is we just don't know how bad we're going to get hit by this legislature and you saw the governor's reaction, which I. The only thing I can think of, are there a lot of local questions that have been, referenda that have been passed in Hamilton?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So why would they?
Most of them are schools.
I understand that, but they also go on, on a ballot and that's an expression of the public will, so why would the legislature think it should intercede contrary to that, I guess?
I don't know, I.
I mean, I think you can play with the referendum process, you can do like they're talking about, put some, put some cooling off periods in it, require general election participation and not special election.
Exactly, well, and they, it's either, seems like it's always done now, either with a special election or in a primary. And, and usually, you know, the, the, there's lower voter turnout and so they can more easily impact.
Conventional wisdom was that probably ran, ran afoul of the interest of referenda. Except for the fact that you got a few school districts primarily, but you know, you get your Carmels and your Hamilton Counties and your Hamilton Southeast. And some pretty well-connected school districts that have been very sophisticated in how they promoted their public questions and, and, and have won quite handily.
They hire marketing firms and they, they go about it in a meticulous way, so they've been successful.
I think, I don't know if you realize Jane Herndon retired from Ice Miller at the end of the year. She, yeah, she did and I knew that I wouldn't say it, but I know, I know she's younger than I am, but she didn't, she's went to work for policy analytics and basically that'll be what she looks at. Primarily the, the financial implications of debt issue, debt issuances and options from either two, because she's very good and she helped Richmond Schools through our petition remonstrance issue last year, so.
Okay, well.
In any event.
It's, thanks for looking into that and, and we've.
And I had a House Bill eleven sixty-seven on my notes and it made no sense, I don't, it was something to do with paraphernalia. So I think, I think I had the wrong number.
I could be, I could be.
I mentioned, I think in passing, I'm not even sure, it may have been after the meeting. Somewhat as expected, the plaintiff's attorneys and attempted class action against the clerks of the state. Did in fact file a petition to transfer their adverse decision out of the appellate court to the Indiana Supreme Court. I've talked with the attorneys for the other defendants, they are Marion County, Johnson County, Hamilton County. And one of the, a couple of their attorneys are going to take the lead and prepare the reply to the petition to transfer, which is a pretty vanilla document. I expect that the Supreme Court might take this up on transfer, given the nature of the issue and just to have it done with it, I hope. If, if they do, I hope that's the reason.
Hope so too.
If it didn't, then, you know, it's, it's, it's an issue that is going to have fiscal impact on a lot of, if, if, if it gets certified as a class action. Because I would assume just about every county is, is doing the same practice and the clerks have always pretty much have their own manual and own common instruction. So with that being said, although I don't anticipate an immediate amount of involvement of our office, there will be some. And this ties in a little bit with what we were talking about for taking initiative counsel on contractual services. I would also tell you that at the BZA meeting last week, the BZA turned down the project on Esteb Road that would have been the park fireworks. Consumer fireworks, not a storage and storage facility. And the next day or the day after the attorney, I was on an email with him and they are going to appeal that. So I started practicing, I started representing the county in two thousand and one, until last year I'd had one petition for judicial review of a BZA action. And now we've got, in two years we've had two. The, the other one with Tackett and the, and the livestock auction house is, is still pending in, before the Court of Appeals and he's not really, at least he hasn't totally corrected all the defects in his filing. And he doesn't have an attorney, it's just, you know, defect after defect and courts claim that they hold pro se litigants to the same standards as they do those who are represented by attorneys. They can claim it all they want, the truth's in the pudding and it ain't happening here. So we're, bottom line, I, I, there, there's two right there that I think are going to be involved, not aware of anything really. not aware of anything really hot and heavy happening at the, with the Health Department. The matters you guys met with yesterday, which I think far exceed the importance of what I'm talking about.
Okay. What else have you got?
Uh, you s, you got my memo yesterday on Max that kind of wanted me to take a little deeper dive into some of the documents in the Elder Village Project. I don't even think I have much at all to look at. I've got two documents that Val provided. They are bothersome in some respects, but at the end of the day, I don't know that there's anything there that I think is totally jaw dropping. I mean, I, I think what we're seeing is somewhat similar to what happened, uh, what they, just the way they operate. They, they come in, they do their due diligence, they figure out their, their development plan. I'm talking about Flaherty, Flaherty and Collins. And, uh, they come up with a project, but then they create shells to develop it and run it after they've done it in last.
We could call those limited liability corporations.
Well, they're limited liability companies, yeah, and, and then that's the reason they do it and whether they're asset based or not. Now, obviously, if the project gets developed, then generally speaking, you know, there's, no one really cares except for the fact, if you recall last July, California lender that had, that did the, uh, MSA three sixty project, which is a huge one over there, if you're familiar, you know, with the Whole Foods anchor tenant in one corner and the twenty seven story upscale apartments. They filed foreclosure against the entity that, you know, and I'm sure that it was a leverage matter to get money and they dismissed the case by agreement within six months after it was filed, so something happened. But there is this inherent risk, you know.
Sure.
Because essentially the debt is what is known in the financial transactional world as no recourse debt. In other words, the only recourse in the event of default is against the asset itself, not against any, anybody guaranteeing the asset. There were, there are references to guarantees in here and I don't know who those entities are, if they've been created. And you'll see that it's, I don't want to throw anything by under the bus. This, these may have been very well vetted by the city folks. I don't know. I talked to my AJ and he hadn't, he hadn't been involved, so I don't know if he didn't do it, who did. Uh, there were meetings yesterday, uh, with Lisa Lee from Ice Miller and their working group over in the city. I called Lisa's office and she was en route at the time, so I talked to her assistant, asked if she would. I had some questions. I just wanted to run by her just to get, kind of give me a comfort level till Max and the council that, you know, you, you made this commitment. I'm not seeing anything that's so serious enough that can't be fixed. I don't know. I'm sure it's broken. This is just the way they operate, but.
But I think we need to do our due diligence because we're talking about a lot of money and.
Yeah, I mean, two million dollars, presume we're gonna be talking real money.
Uh, yeah, it's real money and, yeah, it may be the way they operate, but doesn't mean the way we have to operate.
Well, so the one change I wanted was made to.
And, and, and did I see that the city now is not pursuing the, or the developers not pursuing the loans through the local banks? That, I thought I saw them last night say that they did not, and I may be mistaken, but that they're not getting the loans through Wayne Bank and First Bank now that they found some money in the TIF, the million dollars, and they're adding that to their.
Well, I, I think it was going to be what, four million from?
Right.
Four million, and they, they weren't loans. They were basically, uh, Wayne Bank and, uh, and First. First Bank agreeing to purchase bonds.
Bonds, yeah.
Some TIF bonds.
But I think they're not. I, I thought I heard.
I haven't heard that.
I thought that they said last night.
I can all ask Bob. I mean, you know, but he, getting overlap time with, you know, AJ and Bob's not easy.
You know, to me, the, the distinction here is as long as this property gets built, it's gonna be there and somebody is gonna run it. And we've had a number of instances where, uh, the first one in went bankrupt.
History's told us that that's the first one, the first occupier isn't always the final occupier. Leaven's a good example of that.
And I understand that and I will reiterate what I said last year when I voted against giving this money. That is the problem I have with it because they're marketing and selling this at mark, they're what they say market rent at thirteen to eighteen hundred dollars a month. They build this with taxpayer money. They can't get that. They bail out. Now we're sitting there with a proper that we have to reduce those rents in order to get it occupied, to pay for it. And now what, we have a property that.
But the development agreement, as I understand it, requires it to be for twenty five years, market rate property, not subsidized housing.
It, it, it says, I don't, I did not see that duration.
And then it was, what definition are?
Loan agreement. It's in the, it's project agreement, development agreement, yes.
I haven't, I mean, I have a document called.
And they say that, but their definition, what they started out with market rent, and then I called Val out on this when the developer spoke two weeks ago, changed his definition, which in my world, you can't change a definition of market rent. Market rent is driven by what the market says is rent. And then he had changed that to say, well, now we know that's high for the market, but we're based on nothing like this in the, in the market, we feel like we can get that rent. Well, that's a different entity is saying, hope in one hand and you know what the saying is in the other, so see which one fills up first. So I, I, I don't have a whole lot of confidence in that as our reassurance that they won't make it subsidized housing if they can't. We're talking a lot of a hundred and fifty units.
Understand.
Well, I, I, I felt like I needed to honor Max's request. I think he's gonna probably talk about it. Denied, I don't know if he's going to or not.
So where are we at in the process?
I, I, like I say, I've not been involved. No one at the city has reached out to me or to you. The only involvement I seen anybody invite us to have is Val and then we kept saying, well, are we gonna see the, the, this thing together?
And that was part of our agreement.
We hadn't seen anything, hadn't seen anything. And now the documents I'm looking at are, you know, they're inconsistent. One, the, the, the loan agreement refers to the project agreement that is dated a different date than the date the project agreement that I have them looking at is dated. So, I mean, there, there's nothing terribly onerous about, you know, it's just, it, 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 it's not very well done in the limited context in which I'm examining and and I think Bob had the same concerns for First Bank when he was looking at the documents related to the TIF bond. So I, I don't know, you know, uh, I don't, I, I expect, Lisa did not call me back, but I expect she probably will try today, so I'll talk to her and hopefully. But I, I, I think in all fairness to her, I, she's got a role, but her role primarily is as bond counsel, uh, in, in conjunction with the use of captured TIF revenues the city has, three point four or five million, to make sure that's appropriate and to make sure that the bonds, if they were going to still do bonds, uh, by TIF and this is, are properly executed and issued. So I, as far as overseeing any type of financial viability of the project, that's not what Ice Miller has been retained to do, I don't believe.
Sure.
That's up to the city.
Okay.
So that's it, uh.
Let's have further discussion with the city then and see where we got from here.
Because as, you know, the monies have been appropriated, they're coming from consolidated data, which is substantially a city, city created fund.
Contribution.
Uh, I think that's it right now. Like I said, uh, I don't, I don't know that we're gonna be spending a lot of money on this man appeal right away.
Appeal?
Or the petition to transfer, you know, but if Supreme Court does grant transfer, then we're not allowed to be involved.
Okay, okay. And there's no, there's no way to estimate what that involvement might cost at this point, right?
Oh, I mean, we can look at what monies we spent to date. I think it'd be about the same thing, uh, probably ten thousand, fifteen thousand. I mean, if that, I mean, if, do, if A, will they grant transfer and that's not gonna cost us anything to find out because we're kind of letting the attorney from Johnson County take that lead. And B, if they do, then they vacate the appellate court opinion. We start over on the appeal at the Supreme Court level. And, uh, that is probably going to engender a lot of interest by the county's associations.
I would think so.
So, uh, a lot of variables yet to be determined.
Okay, well, thanks for bringing us up to speed on that. Anything else?
I don't think so.
Okay, then.
I have something for Ron if you.
I do too, but go ahead.
No, go ahead. Mike, Mike can wait.
This is a list of the assets of WUR.
Oh. I don't know, my glasses are.
Yeah, that's pretty small even for me.
It's all right. Yeah, there are really only, only two lines of, of any significance. They're highlighted kind of in the middle of the page. Thirty percent of the laptops and a, a Rico printer, fifty percent and a five-year contract, uh, a service contract. So those are the two, um, priciest, uh, things on this list. Everything else basically is, uh, is educational, toys, gifts, uh, instructional materials that have to do with recycling and conservation. So, uh, what, what we're proposing, and I have talked to Tim Williams about this and he is perfectly fine with this, is the ones that are highlighted, uh, would go to Wayne County Soil and Water. And everything else.
Just those two items in the middle or there's some of.
They're, they're highlighted.
I got you.
It's the, the, uh, the actual item is on the left and then who it would go to or who could use it is on the right. So the ones that are highlighted on the right are Wayne County Soil and Water. So there's two, four, six, eight, nine. And again, the only thing of any real significance is the copy machine and the laptops. The laptops were, were purchased with the same split of money. Thirty percent from Soil and Water, Wayne County Soil and Water, thirty percent from, uh, from Richmond Sanitary District, fifty percent or thirty percent from, uh, from WUR and ten percent from Union County Soil and Water.
So when, so I, I, again, I ought to give my glasses, but so you, the county's taking those entirely?
If they are highlighted, our, the intention is to give them to Wayne County Soil and Water.
Soil and Water, okay.
WCSWCD.
Okay.
Is Wayne County Soil and Water Conservation District. And everything that is not highlighted, that, uh, Wayne County would take, um, for our eventual, uh, joint, um, entrance into the recycling, uh, program, working with Richmond Sanitary District. And so those things could be used either by, um, a Wayne County employee or a Richmond Sanitary District employee in the educational arena, going to schools and and holding public events like at the four age fair and those kind of things. So essentially, the only thing other than this, other than these items, which probably have a, a total value of maybe between five and ten thousand dollars for all of it, um, would be cash.
Cash and bank accounts.
And at the moment, there's in round numbers about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We have, uh, agreed to continue the, uh, ongoing, uh, activities using that money, uh, for this year, um, including paying the, the salaries of the, of the full-time and part-time employee. So we'll do a little deeper dive on how much might be left over at the end of the year.
Okay, so, because that was my question, or the concept then is to let the existing tipping fee die?
It's dead.
It's dead, okay.
It died on December thirty first.
Or not.
Correct. And there is, there is no current tipping fee. We have the option as a county to impose a tipping fee, um, to be used for recycling. And it's looking like, um, the, the best option would be to work, uh, from the interlocal agreement with Richmond Sanitary District to expand, uh, their operations for recycling. Remember that every ton that you recycle is a ton that doesn't go into the landfill and so it extends the life of the landfill. And opening a new cell or a new entire landfill is a hugely expensive proposition. So they, they currently estimate that, uh, it has about a fifty-year life left, the, the current landfill. But if we can, uh, develop a robust recycling program that we can extend that by ten or twenty years, add a huge savings to the, to Richmond Sanitary District. So that's kind of the, the path that we're, we're, uh, looking at. We've not made any commitment at this point and so there is no tipping fee, uh, but we want to develop that, uh, that process now.
Possible, maybe we want to send our, or amend our motions and talk with this, consider Union County to make the effective date twelve thirty one twenty five?
I don't, I don't want to.
Okay.
What I want to do is, uh, is move forward with whatever the next step is. I mean, we, we have tentative agreement on how we would, uh, dispose of, of assets of the organization.
Hard assets, I think, cash.
And, and the cash, I'm still considering. Right now, we have about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Give Union County twenty five thousand dollars, ten percent, which is roughly their, uh, their share based on population of the region, uh, split between Wayne County and, and Union County.
At the end, but we don't know what that number's gonna be. If you're gonna operate for the full year out of your existing revenues.
We don't, but we have some control over exactly how much we spend this year. If we go ahead and, and end WUR, um, that money would come to the county to, it would be set up in a separate fund, recycling fund or whatever we name it. We can continue whatever operation needs to continue, uh, paid out of that fund. And, and we commissioners would control what those expenditures are.
So basically that we would do an immediate division of the cash, but we, or functionally, we would continue the operations, funding them and looking at it, you know, both from the Union County's perspective and, you know, they would have whatever their ten percent is and they could do with that whatever they choose.
Correct.
And the county would have its ninety percent.
Not whatever they choose, but whatever recycling-related thing they would choose.
Okay.
Because they're, they're gonna be under the same restrictions that we are. And so essentially what that twenty five thousand dollars would do would, would be to continue what they currently do, what WUR currently does for them for an additional year in twenty twenty six. So, you know, they can do other things that are recycling oriented, but they have to use it for recycling things. And they know that and they're.
Oh, that's, yeah, that's in the statute.
They're interested in doing that. They are also interested, uh, in holding a joint, uh, meeting, a joint public session.
At least joint with Union County and Wayne County or do they anticipate?
Probably as well, all three.
All three.
Entities. And, uh, right now, the, the thought is that we would set it up on a, on a Friday, um, in, uh, in March, so that we can absolutely get this done before the March thirty first, the three months that, that we have to complete the process. So the next question is, what else do we need to do?
I think we need to get a draft agreement together.
Okay, so let's, let's.
Division of the assets.
Putting everything Jeff just said in.
Okay.
These in draft form.
Okay.
And this folks to look at.
And let's, let's do that quickly, um, and I'll work with you on that. Aaron, any questions, comments?
No, I, I agree. We need to get that done before the March thirty first deadline and.
So do we, we also need to, um, send a letter to the Commissioner of IDAM?
Once we get our agreement, yeah.
After the agreement's signed? And is the agreement sign or, or agreed to at the, at the joint public hearing or?
At or after.
Okay.
I don't like to have a public hearing on an issue when the issue's already decided. I mean, even. I don't like to have a public hearing on an issue when the issue's already decided. I mean, even, you know.
It's, I understand. I'm trying to get an idea of the timeline.
Well, and I think we did.
When we need to have the meeting last month, quickly, we need to, I, I know, you sent that out last month. And so I just want to know if there are any hiccups. The other thing that, that came to light last Friday, I think, the, the Commissioner of the D L G F sends out usually a weekly kind of newsletter. Here are some dates that are coming up. And in one of those bullet points was Soil and Water, or I'm sorry, not Soil and Water, but solid waste districts have an upcoming report that is due on March the first. And so Steve and I were talking about that, and he dug a little deeper and found that there are something like four reports that solid waste districts are supposed to file on Gateway every year. I have been on the board for, I don't know, two or three years.
Never heard that either.
I've never heard anybody talk about a report of any kind. So I don't know whether they've been filed, whether they haven't been filed. I'm hoping at least the financial report has been filed, but I don't, I don't know that.
Tim would probably have better insight than that than anybody, because I think they would, they had the lead on that.
So we, we need to, you know, nail some of those things down, probably make some calls and, and see where we're at. So there are, there are other issues, and that's why I don't want to prolong this for a year at all, no matter, no matter what.
I mean, to kick the rock over. Okay, I'll see what I can figure out.
All right, well, keep in touch with me on that, and we'll, we'll work together on, on getting a, a draft that we can send to Jim, Jim and Tim Williams.
Commissioner's office may be the big variable, because I don't know what they're, you know, they've had people supposedly here in some of those meetings that were either connected or, you know.
To a state, yeah.
States, I don't know.
So I never heard anything from anybody about.
I've not had any, any contact from anybody but Jim Williams, and he said he, you and his brother are on the same page, and just keep him posted. That's what he left with me a couple of weeks ago.
And so what, what I told Tim was that we would, we would pull together a draft and then share that.
That's the next step.
Okay, good.
Good.
Anything else? You've got something for Ron?
Yep. I don't know if you guys were C C'd on this, but I received an email from Major Moore, the Sheriff's Department. Got a individual called in to dispatch about parking dogs and want to know about the ordinance and everything. And we went back and forth on discussion, and I guess the last he heard was that you had some stuff that you needed to do on it. The email is just.
I think what we talked about was there needs to be a way to write a ticket.
Yeah, we were talked about that, but I thought, hey, hey, Major Moore was under the impression that there was some more work that needed to be done on European. He said the clerk's office is all set up.
Well, we, we had to look at our ordinance violation.
New clerk to make sure she was aware of this, what she was to do, but it is set up.
By, by ordinance, but the.
Is our code enforcement ordinance, does it include thi- this, this particular one, you know?
I think I checked.
I thought you did too.
I thought I did too. Okay, because it's been around a while.
The issue that I recall was there was no mechanism, there's no.
Citation.
Actual citation, you know, physical citation.
Maybe that's what it was that you were going to look at.
Just because I think Aaron commented that the, that the template noun that was modified to go digital had eliminated the ordinance violation box to be checked or something.
Right.
And citation of.
But I believe.
I, I think the sheriff has commented though and said that they, they are able to do that now, correct?
That is correct.
Yes.
Under the e-ticket, you can go in and put the ordinance in there and write a.
It has now been modified to be able to do that.
Under our ordinance and.
So if that's the case, and there's a way to write a ticket, and the, there is, it's, it's set up in the clerk's office to be able to take money for tickets.
Sounds like that you just need to have that conversation with Tara and make sure that she understands it.
So I have not talked to Tara specifically about it. I know we talked to Debbie about it last year on another issue. I don't think it was parking dogs, but.
I did share the ordinance process that you had sent me with, with the current clerk with Tara. And just so she's on board, because I knew that that was a conversation, and I want to make sure she had that ordinance in front of her. I did send it to her, but I've not had any further conversations with her, so.
Well, let's, let's do that this afternoon.
Talk to her, because obviously, we're not the only entity that has ordinance enforcement actions filed in the clerk's office. City should be doing quite a few of them, more so than we do, so.
Okay.
If we can blend that into the same process for the clerk, I think it makes sense. Okay, I, I've not got anything to do. I mean, I think the last I heard is you, we were going to check and make sure that the unreasonable noise ordinance was, had been listed in our enforcement ordinance.
Well, let's double-check that. I, I thought you did too, but let's double-check that and make sure, and let's have the conversation with Tara today.
Okay, and I'll just let the major know then that where we're at, and I'm going to sign on here and see if I can find it.
You can find, give yourself a ticket?
Yeah.
Get myself a ticket. Tucker, not that loud, is he?
No.
Okay.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Anything else for Ron? No?
I'm taking a minute to go and get my glasses.
Well, let's go ahead and, and discuss the hotel rate increase. What have you got, Bobby?
I have three of them. The first one is for Soil and Water, for two rooms, two nights at the Westin, for a hundred and forty-nine dollars a night. The second one is for Superior Court One, for one room, three nights, for a hundred and fifty-nine dollars a night. And the third one's for the Health Department, for one night, one room, for a hundred and thirty-sixty-six a night.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve those. Second that.
A motion in a second to approve those hotel rates. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries.
What, what is our current rate that they don't have to?
Hundred and thirty.
Thirty, okay, because I know we, I know it was discussed last year to possibly raise that, but um, but hundred and thirty is, I didn't know where it was. Thank you.
Do you have some?
I do have some.
Let's go ahead with those.
So I have minutes from the executive session on February tenth, twenty twenty-five. I'd like to make a motion to approve that.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Then I have minutes of the Commissioner meeting on February twelfth, twenty twenty-five. I'd like to make a motion to approve those.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
And then I have claims.
Go right ahead.
I have Center Point paid on two eighteen, twenty twenty-five, Indiana American Water paid on two thirteen, twenty twenty-five. Mastercard paid on two eighteen, twenty twenty-five. Another American Water paid two nineteen, twenty twenty-five. And general claims on dated two nineteen, twenty twenty-five. I'd like to make a motion to approve those, please. Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the claims. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Anything else?
That is it for me, sir.
All right. You got anything?
Go back to what you were talking about from the funds from W U R.
Sure.
Last time you talked, it was like two hundred and fifty thousand.
Uh huh. I don't want to do anything just yet.
I know.
At, at.
Are there salaries paid out of that?
There are.
These employees becomes county employees.
They're already county employees. They're, they are actually, let me rephrase. They are county employees. They're actually paid out of Soil and Water, out of the Soil and Water budget. And so four entities that are collaborating are paying the county, which goes into the general fund to provide the funding to pay those salaries. So it will not come out of this special fund that we'll be setting up. The salaries will not.
Yeah, and as you were talking about a, a financial report that has to go to Gateway. What is that that you were notified for?
We get council commissioners, others, I assume, get a letter from the Commissioner of the Department of Local Government.
He sends it pretty broad-based. I get, I get it.
That's not what I asked, but what?
I don't know, Mark. I don't, I don't know what it is. I just know that it exists.
Well, there is a possibility I could have filed that.
I think it's unlikely, but it's possible.
Yeah, I'm, I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know more about it to see if I filed any kind of report that way.
We'll get to the bottom of it, and you'll be in the loop on that. My first stop is going to be with, with the Treasurer's Office, not as the Treasurer and her chief deputy, but as people who were, people who were hired by W U R to, to track the finances of W U R.
But if there was a report to Gateway, the Treasurer couldn't have made it.
If they were authorized as the representative of a, a quasi-governmental entity, they could have. I don't know whether they did. I just know that it's possible, because there are many quasi-governmental entities that file reports in Gateway.
Okay. But I don't think they have access to Gateway.
Okay. Anything else? All right.
Jeff?
Yes.
Parking dogs is on the list that the sheriff can't accept.
Thank you.
What's that word, this number?
The parking dog ordinance is two thousand five dash ten, and the Violation Bureau ordinance is two thousand nine dash zero zero five.
All right.
Thank you.
Brent, got anything for us today?
Nope, just here watching.
All right, we will not, we will not adjourn the meeting at this time, but we're going to take a recess until ten thirty, when Matthew Kane from E M A will join us to discuss the lease of the radio tower.
Could, could we, before we recess, could we talk about the, what, Rob and Henry, the email about that?
Sure.
Did you get my email?
I haven't seen it yet, but I, I emailed her.
I did too, and I just said, I'm fine with it. I think we can.
Proclamation for Reading Day for Wayne County.
Yeah, she's on the board of, of, what is it called? Every Child Can Read, something like that.
Yes, yes.
And in May, April, April or May, they're having special reading event. She inquired whether the commissioners would consider a proclamation on this event, and absolutely we will. And we'll work with, with Rob and Henry to make sure that happens. Anything else?
That's it. Thank you. I appreciate it.
So let's, let's recess until ten thirty, at which point we will discuss the radio tower lease with Matthew Kane.
Thank you.
All right, we're ready to reconvene. Welcome back to our viewing public. Matthew, I understand you want to talk to us about the radio tower leases.
Good morning. We are in a position where we're ready to move forward with the lease agreement that the county has with the tower company to put our equipment on those tower sites, both at County Highway and up in Whitewater area. So a copy of that lease, Ron Cross has been working very closely with Barry and his, Barry Ritter and his team, along with the parent company, Irongate, which is that Tower King that you've heard us mention. Ron had several suggestions and requests to incorporate into this contract, which was accepted. And so you have before you the, the final copy. I believe it was sent out electronically for you to review. I, I am not, obviously, a lawyer, so a lot of it, it gets into a little legalese for me, so I'll defer those, if there's any questions of that, to, to Mr. Cross. A couple of things I'll point out is that the amount of one hundred and seventy-five dollars per tower per month is the agreed-upon rate, with a built-in three percent increase each year after that. So it's something we'll have to budget for moving forward, and have a discussion with council at budget hearing time. They should know that that's coming, because we've talked about that in the past. We just didn't know a dollar amount.
Do you have any sense of whether that, any, any type of litmus test, or whether that's just, you know, maybe a little high, maybe a little low? I mean, I had no idea. And of course, we don't bid that. Just bid the construction of the tower.
I, I have no idea either. I've never had to do anything like that, and I've heard either.
So the one at the highway garage, we're going to pay that four thousand one hundred seventy-five dollars a month, but then they're going to pay us, is it five hundred a month?
I believe.
For the, a lease of the, the ground that it's on?
Yes.
Okay, so, so the net is thirty-six seventy-five, or?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, got it. Questions on the lease? I mean, mine were about that and about the, the amount.
No, I, I, I'm okay with it if Ron is. I mean, he's put his seal of approval on it. I'm, we've already went down this path. We're, we can't say no now to.
We're way, way down the road.
The big issues I had are addressed in here. I wanted to make sure that the actions of another tenant couldn't harm us. If you did, there'd be recourse.
Yeah, if, if Ron's not, if okay with it, I'll make a motion that we approve this, these leases.
And this is signed just by the president?
And authorize the president to sign.
Okay.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
So I will sign these and we'll.
Get those to Irongate for their signature, and then make sure Bobby gets the final copy, signed copy. So our next step moving forward in this project, we'll be, again, kind of leaning on Mr. Cross, but we need to develop a document, whether it's an M O U or an inter-local, I don't know what we're going to call it, where we transfer the ownership of the end-user radios, that's currently purchased by the county, into the individual governmental entity, so that that responsibility moving forward then is, is for them to maintain those radios and upkeep and that kind of thing. So we will be working with Mr. Cross moving forward to get, see what that document might look like, that the county will have to approve and, and sign with the, the individual governmental entities, so.
You break it, you buy it policy.
I'm sorry, yes, right.
You break it, you buy it. It's yours.
Exactly, exactly. So, any other questions for me?
Think so.
I don't think so.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yep, thank you.
While we were at, in recess, I spoke to Mike Sharp, and he's willing to, to work with Economy on their application for community crossings, but he, he recalls that they applied for a grant and received a grant three or four years ago. So he'll probably need to bring in a contractor, you know, because he, he bases his estimates on. on material cost, not, you know, what they're going to charge for labor and, and equipment and that kind of stuff, so, but he's willing to, to work with them, so if you can get with him with.
You gave point of contact.
I did not, because I, I wasn't sure who you had talked to, so, okay.
I'll, I'll send him Barb's email.
Okay, good. But he also has a, another hire, and wants us to, to approve another contract for this new person in terms of the, the schooling.
The C D L.
And paying it back if they leave before two years is up, so that employment and conditional cost of training reimbursement agreement, and it's just filled in the blanks with this new hire, it's the same document with the ninety six hundred dollars.
That's what I was looking for, ninety six hundred.
Ninety six hundred, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did you want to look at that real quick?
I, actually, Mike did it, and I think I, I, a couple of employees ago, and I.
We're good with this, and if you're good with it, then that's what we agreed on, the ninety six hundred.
And that's what we used last week for the most recent hire.
I'll make a motion that we approve, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the, this employment and conditional cost of training reimbursement agreement. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. And I think, unless anybody had conversations while we were.
I did.
Recessed, do you want to report on?
Yeah, I want to keep, I want to get Ron and Steve on the same loop on the, the ordinance and noise ordinance, so I spoke to Chief, Major Moore, and he will have to send the ordinances to the state, they inputted on our e-ticket, so that's not going to be an issue, and, and then he's going to forward me the emails with the conversations that he had with Debbie Barry, and I'm going to take that to Tara, make sure that she's okay with everything, and then we should be good to go unless.
Do you want me to send Major the two ordinances?
I think he has them, but go ahead.
I, I thought he, I think he got them from Bobby.
Because he was going to, he said he's going to send me, there's four ordinances that we actually, they could enforce, and he's going to send those to me, and he says, we might want to tweak a couple of the other ones, we're going to look at them, and then we're going to go over and see if there's any changes we need to them, and then bring that before the other two commissioners and you, but I just wanted to bring you on board what our conversation was, that, so I think we're getting pretty close to this being done.
Wasn't quite said. Again, the ordinance itself is problematic.
Well, yeah, I mean, the.
I mean, I don't know what constitutes unreasonable noise, and we don't attempt to put any decibel criteria in it, do we? I don't believe, because first time we put one in, then a green dryer is going to generate.
Why don't we get the mechanism to enforce it in place, and then we can go back and look at it?
Because I think it's going to ultimately boil down to the discretion of the investigating officer.
And I think then maybe we should look back at, then maybe modify in this ordinance, have you take a look at it and say, okay, we could make this a little bit stronger.
Of course, let them work on, on the field for a while, and let their experience tell us the issues they see with it, and if they have a.
That's good.
If they have a discomfort level, serving the citation on, based on the readiness of the ordinance, then we, we need to beef it up and tighten it down a little bit.
Yes.
That makes sense to me, and we'll see how, how it goes.
I had a conversation with Tara, I just made sure that she had the copy of the ordinance of the violations, and kind of went over with her, make sure she was good with it, and she said she would need to check within her office to make sure that they have ways to receive any money that would be issued by a citation, so. She is checking on that, but follow, follow up with her, make sure she's good, yep, thank you.
All right. Anything else? If not.
You do claims.
We already did.
Did claims. There's nothing to sign on this application for nonprofit to use the fairgrounds, right? Okay. All right, then we are adjourned.